Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the 11th president of the University of Guam, Dr. Thomas W. Kreis.
So, welcome to the second town hall on the subject of the strategic planning process. So, I wanted to thank all the participants. There we go. Wanted to thank all the, let's say, I should start with the one before that, the, this one that indicates the kind of attempt that we made in the strategic planning process to reach as big a part of the university, all the different places that we could. And so you see that the, between January and August, in the first phase of the strategic planning process, we had over 40 faculty, staff, administrators, alumni, and students participated. We did eight online surveys, and one indication that we surveyed enough is when we get complaints about there being too many surveys. We also had 15 committee meetings, more than 15 subcommittee meetings, and then we had the town hall meeting in April that many of you attended, and now this one. So now we're in phase, that was phase one, from February to April 2019, and thanks to Jim Hoyer for helping us guide through this process to create the strategic plan. So, phase one included information gathering through surveys, input from all faculty, staff, administrators, students, and alumni, and we developed the vision, mission, values, and strategic initiatives, sort of the first half of the strategic plan. And an important part of our thinking throughout this process was to make sure that we were building on all the work that the institution has done. I think of it particularly over the last 20 years, and so the work of certainly good to great at the collaboratoriums, the reforms of 2001 that led to the faculty senate structure and the region nominating council, all of that work, as you all know better than anybody, has really ramped up the university in an important way. So, we wanted to make sure that we were finishing up any loose ends from good to great in the collaboratoriums, building on all of the ideas that have come through those various earlier phases of strategic planning. Then phase two, from the end of last semester to the end of last month, we were developing prioritization criteria, meaning how do we decide which good ideas are higher in priority than others? And then we developed goals, objectives, projects, and programs. This is the members of the Strategic Planning Committee. We had some other people come in at different shorter times with just an idea of what a significant group of people this was to put together and to try to bring as many ideas as we could together. Strategic planning is a big commitment of time and energy, and the whole institution has to do its regular job too on top of this, so this is a real commitment on the part of our colleagues for making this go. So, thanks very much to all members of the Strategic Planning Committee. So, following the usual procedures for strategic planning, we wanted to have something of a sense of the vision of the institution. So, we have a very well-developed and well-loved mission statement, but we also wanted a sense of why are we doing this, what's the direction of the institution? And so we decided that transforming lives, advancing communities was really what the institution is about, and so that was our vision statement. For the mission statement, we of course stuck with our Ina descubre seti, to enlighten, to discover, and to serve. And then we wanted to have a little bit of verbiage to help people understand what that meant. So, we added the descriptor, "The University of Guam empowers the region by uniting island wisdom with universal sources of enlightenment to support exceptional education, discovery, and service that respect and benefit local and global communities." So, I hope you'll find that that's a nice way to sort of encapsulate what we mean to describe Ina descubre seti in a little bit more, a fuller way. Then we went through a nice process, building on earlier work on our core values, so a number of different documents sort of began this process, and I think you'll agree that these are the kinds of things that we value at this institution: respect and supportiveness, honesty, integrity, trustworthiness, and dependability, high standards, diversity, community engagement, sustainability, and campus beauty, innovation, and proactivity. Then the next phase in the process is to scan the environment, both our internal one and our external one, and ask the question, what is needed to move in the direction of that vision, to fulfill that mission statement, and to really live out the values that we'd identified. So, stable funding, public funding plus revenue generation was clearly job one. I like to joke that payroll is always job one, so this would be putting this front and center, that resources are necessary for getting anything done. The second was improved student faculty engagement, and some of this came from our student and recent graduate members of the committee, and also fits really well with high-impact educational practices, which we'll mention in a minute. Also, increased public visibility and fostering public confidence in UOG by all different means, seeking recognition that UOG is a worthy investment, the cultivation of alumni relationships, and so we've had a lot of progress in developing new ways to reach out to alumni, but I think we can go a long way to really beefing that up and making it a bigger part of our university experience. Improved facilities is another one, and then improved student experiences was another one of these environmental scans. The next phase of strategic planning is to figure out the criteria that we would follow to decide on various kinds of programs or ideas and to decide whether we can do them. So, first was fit to mission, which of course makes perfect sense. The student experience was second, contribution to the public good, viability by all the different means of viability for personnel, training, education, resources, facilities. Fifth was quality of the program or the activity. Six was financial sustainability and efficiency and productivity as well. So, this might relate, if it's an academic program, to the number of students being served, for instance. Number seven is environmental sustainability. Number eight is that it honors the values of respectu and ifanafa maulek. Number nine is demand and relationships, and number 10 is cultural contribution. So, those are the criteria we're using for the strategic issues. So, this, now this will be what's particularly new to you since April, so this is a set of six strategic initiatives, so these are sort of the high-level things that all the particular kinds of goals and programs would fall underneath. And I said at the beginning of the launch of this process in January, reiterated it in the April town hall, and again at convocation last month, that the two particular, two big directions that I think this strategic plan represents is the movement of the university to continue the movement in the direction of becoming a research university and being recognized as a research university, and two is becoming a partnership university and being recognized as a remarkably good partner for Guam and all of Micronesia and all of the partners that we have locally and beyond. Then the next four strategic initiatives, I think of this as kind of the foundation on which all the, the first two would sit. So, enriching the student experience is really important. It's important for student retention, for graduation rates, for admissions and recruitment, in every way that enriching the student experience and sort of catching up to some of the national, international standards for student experience is important. Also recognizing that we're principally a commuter campus, so in some ways it takes more effort to try to create the student experience of a campus environment when it's mostly commuter students. Number four is becoming a model of operations and customer service. So, in the model, we're thinking of particularly for other agencies of the government and for our regional partners. So, how everything that we do, every office that we have, we have many offices that any organization has, how can those serve really as a model for others to follow? Number, and there's been considerable effort over recent years to address that, so this is continuing that and trying to make that a particular goal. Number five is growing our financial resources, so doing everything we can for public support, but then also expanding public-private partnerships and auxiliary enterprises, non-credit-bearing training kinds of things, other alternative ways to expand our resources to support our basic mission. And number six is building and sustaining our infrastructure, and so that's also been a part of ongoing conversation, and we have a number of plans, as I'll get to, for some new buildings and maintaining old ones. We're sitting in one of the ones that needs the most help. So, number one, the research university direction. I think it's, what's new, I think, in this situation, this strategic initiative, is thinking about providing particularly professional doctoral programs, so first professional degrees in fields that are appropriate to our expertise and our markets. We have some careful analysis to do to decide which degrees would be sooner rather than later. And then in this, because this is a five-year plan, it's very ambitious to anticipate being able to launch a research PhD in a five-year period. It's not impossible, but that's, so the way we put it is to prepare to put on, to have research PhDs, is kind of the idea there, because that would take a lot more sort of adjustment to get to that stage. And for, I should say, for professional doctorates, I mean things like a doctor of education, doctor of business administration, it could mean things like a law degree, a JD, MDs, DDSs, physical therapy doctorates, occupational therapy, audiology, all of the kind of applied and professional doctoral terminal degree programs are the ones that we're thinking of in that category. And you might know about the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching, which for many, many years has kept a big list of all the universities in the United States and classifies them. And so, what I'm suggesting is our goal in this process is to use that classification as a way to gauge our rise into being recognized as a research university. So, it's been through some changes in the recent years. The whole thing has been handed by Carnegie to Indiana University, so now they're managing it, and they've made a number of changes. The new name for the category that I'm suggesting that we aim for is the Doctor Professional or DP, Doctor Professional University or DPU. It's recently been called DRU, Doctoral Research University. It's also been called R3, and long ago it was the bottom of the old R2, so for those of you who have been following that. That is now on a three-year cycle, and it's, it takes, you can't apply except once every three years, so I suggest the 2027 would be an appropriate year to think about that. And so, part of the research university direction would be to enhance our capacity for island wisdom, so by that we mean traditional Chamorro and other indigenous cultures, our responses to things, global problems like climate change, approaches to interpersonal relations that are special to this environment and that we have particular expertise in, as well as other distinctive fields that are distinctive because of our location and our, and our neighborhood. And then another piece of this, of course, is the elements for rising to that level of university. So, the two big ways to do it are having a certain number of doctoral degrees granted every year, and the new category allows for the professional degrees to count as well as the PhDs. Before, they used to only count the research PhDs. Now, they count both together, so that opens that door to, for us. And then there's also a minimum dollar amount of federal research money that you have to match. That, at the moment, for all three levels, it's $5 million a year. As of this year, the University of Guam is managing $14.6 million in federal research grants, which is a remarkable figure for an institution our size. So, we're way past it in terms of the research capacity, research dollars capacity, and so the degrees are sort of catching up to that. And then the last there about developing a research park innovation hub, this is related to our capacity for public-private partnerships, the shrimp and tilapia hatchery is a great example of that kind of idea. So, this, developing more of a capacity to support innovation, incubation, partnerships to get, to get businesses or new industries going is what that's referring to. So, that's on the research university direction. Other institutions in our current category, so right now we're called a master's medium under the Carnegie thing, that category is also referred to as a regional comprehensive university. If you know the California State system and the master plan, the California State universities are in the regional comprehensive, and the University of California, the research category is another way to think of it. But ones that we have been using as peer institutions include the University of Hawaii at Hilo, New Mexico Highlands University, the University of the Virgin Islands, Montana State University in Billings, which is a secondary campus, not the main one, and also Sierra Nevada College. And then the move up to the DPU level, the aspirational ones, this is a selection of institutions that are in that category: Alliant International, Indiana State, Indiana University of Pennsylvania, Middle Tennessee State University, Towson University, University of North Florida, and the University of West Georgia. Now, on the second one, the partnership institution, and I think of the research and partnerships as being very much related, and we are already famous for our ability to be partners in Guam and throughout Micronesia and even beyond. So, the idea here is to really emphasize this, so this becomes something that people think of very quickly when they think of what's distinctively different about the University of Guam. So, preparing to apply for another Carnegie classification, this is a voluntary one, called the Carnegie Community Engagement Classification, and so this is now on a five-year cycle for application, so the choices are 2020 or 2025, so I suggest preparing for 2025 would make the most sense. I have it on good authority that we applied for this in 2006, and so we had it for one year, and then we never kept up with it. So, if that's the case, then we know how to do this, and it's a nice kind of a punch list of ideas for how to demonstrate that you're an institution that's particularly committed to community engagement. And you can see how being particularly noted for community engagement would reinforce some of those values and some of the list of things that we need, which is a public perception of the value of the institution, that supporting the University of Guam is an investment, not an expense, those kinds of things. One of the ways that we would make this partnership university direction happen would be to collect, display, and foster all of the different kinds of connections that we have. So, we have already collected the, all of the memorandum of understanding that we have, and we have just a big database of that, but we need to make it in such a way that it's useful to many different people. And one way to describe this would be, if you're going, say, to Majuro, there should be a way to look online to figure out what are the UOG, what kind of UOG activities are going on in Majuro that I might want to connect with while I'm there, or I want something to happen there, who knows about it? So, that would help to create that. Another way to think of it is, if you take an institution like Northern Marianas College, where we've just completed the three-plus-one program in criminal justice, and so we have a number of really good, strong relationships with Northern Marianas College, you could say, look at all the ways that we're partnering with this institution, and then look at another one, like the College of Marshall Islands, and say, how can we repeat that kind of robust partnership with CMI? That would be an example of how we expect this, this kind of website and data storage to help us to be able to do that. And not only in the region, but all of our international connections. You think of the way PIP is so well-connected all over, all over many places, but Japan and Korea particularly. So, how do we connect? How do we make more of those kinds of relationships? And then seeking to establish stronger ties and on-ground resources at all the regional colleges. So, I think one of the most distinctive things about the University of Guam is the fact that we are directed in our charter, by our sponsoring government, to serve people outside the jurisdiction of that government. So, we're directed to serve the people of Micronesia. No other public university in the country is directed to help anybody except who's in that state that the government is sponsoring. And so, that's a particularly unusual, distinctive thing for us, and I think really strengthening the presence and the ties in our regional colleges is a way to demonstrate this kind of sense that this is Micronesia's university. And then also promoting online and hybrid programs and public-private partnerships across the region is another one. I'm struck by the number of aquaculture programs around the region, and also the fact that no one's doing anything that other people are doing, you know, it's sea cucumbers and milk fish and tilapia and shrimp, and so that the, it's sort of, it's sitting there begging for some kind of coordination, I think, because of that variety. It's just an example. And then many of you would know this map about the Guam Open Research and Education Exchange. So, the group that was working on the connections piece, this partnership piece, was thinking about this map where Guam looks like a gigantic continent in the middle of the Pacific there, but it's suggesting in an airline map way, some of our connections, this one, of course, the IT connections. But we're imagining something like this to help us visualize the kind of ways that we are a partnership institution. So, now moving on to the foundational kind of initiatives that help make the research and partnership vision happen. Enriching the student experience is all about the more wraparound, intrusive, engaged kind of student support that we can provide. So, this is a trend nationally to try to do more for students, and particularly using technology to help for all of faculty to sort of pay attention earlier and be able to report on students who might need some more help. We also have special consideration of our regional culture and a sort of a resistance to talking to professors and people who are significantly older than students, and so how do we deal with that kind of, how do we develop peer mentoring, peer advising that will help particularly in our situation? So, and also to reform processes to ensure students can finish in a timely manner, so this has to do with scheduling courses and thinking about maybe cohort programs and other things to try to accelerate the college completion. We're also very concerned about the college affordability problem, and so the college affordability initiative is underway, where we're trying to figure out ways to help students navigate the incredibly complicated business of paying for college. It's incredibly complicated everywhere, and thanks to EMSS and everybody putting together ideas for how to do this in a much more effective manner. We're also interested in a student leadership development program, and the beginnings of that are also underway, and that would also feed into the student experience, and that kind of sense of belonging that you develop through those kinds of programs are very important to students actually finishing their programs. And here's a slide on the college affordability issue, and this will become important because we'll likely be talking about the need to raise tuition in response to our, to our budget situation, and so we need to figure this out and need to be able to help people navigate this. So, it's worth noting that UOG students who applied for financial aid on average received $4,300 from Pell Grants, $4,500 from federal loans, and $2,900 in local financial aid. And our alumni, all the products of our collective work, it's nice to see this range. I'm always impressed with the number of alumni I run into everywhere, certainly in Guam, but everywhere in the region. It's a very impressive collection, and it's, Norm and Cat and the Endowment Foundation staff have been putting together these alumni events by company or by organization, and it's been really interesting to see the alums all recognize each other as, oh, you're an alum too, that's very nice. And then it's also been nice for the bosses. Some of the bosses are graduates, but either way, they get to sort of see in one eyeful their whole collection of alumni, so that's been effective, I think. So, the fourth strategic initiative is becoming a model for operations and customer service in Guam and all of Micronesia. So, we want to model excellent customer experience to internal and external customers, and so some of this is a mind shift, some of it might be reforming the way that we do things. We've made some efforts to try to improve or try to improve processes. For instance, I think of the research corporation of UOG as being a really great way to figure out how to execute federal research grants in a much more effective way. So, that's an example of this institution figuring those things out and setting up a structure that makes that happen. Modeling other ways that we can improve our processes and become a model for the rest of Guam and the region is important in this, in this initiative. Developing user-centered web services and online processes, so shifting more things to online models, particularly ones that can then populate other kinds of databases that we're trying to collect to make them more useful. Also, implement professional development programming to enhance employee skills, knowledge, and engagement. There's quite a hunger for professional development, I'd say, at every level, and so including this in this initiative is an important part. And then reform support and auxiliary functions to improve customer satisfaction. We'll be thinking of ways to do that and to monitor that and to sort of gauge our improvement over time. The fifth one of the strategic initiative is, of course, growing our financial resources. So, the financial model is something to be thinking about in this period, particularly with the declining support from, from the government, and so we need to figure out how to manage in this sort of new environment. We need to foster entrepreneurial and experimental spirit. That generally is not a feature of universities, so it's hard to get that kind of experimentalism into, at least in terms of process and so on, into, into a university. So, there are a number of different ways to try to do that, and so we'll be thinking of ways to do that. And then we think that public-private partnership opportunities are one seriously important way to expand our financial resources, as well as provide opportunities for undergraduate research or graduate student research, as well as partnerships and making lots of other things happen. And so, we have already lots of work moving in that direction, and we're very close to getting some, a bill passed that would make this a more positive possibility. And then an example here, just some graphs to show you for the growing our financial resources. The pie chart shows you the percentages that we get from different areas. So, for instance, we can anticipate the GovGuam appropriation to get smaller, we can anticipate grants and contracts and perhaps tuition and fees to become larger. Auxiliary enterprises are an opportunity at many universities for expanding revenue, so there may be some opportunities there. And then you see the division of the fees, the grants, auxiliary, other revenues, appropriations, and the total revenues there, and the percent change from 17 to 18. And this one shows the expenditures, and so you see 47% on the core mission, 11% academic support, and you see student services, institutional support, operations and maintenance, scholarship, and others. And then you see the, the figures there and the portions of all of that, as well as the percent changes, which some of them are fairly dramatic. So, this, the purpose of this is just to say that we need to be thinking about the financial structure and make that part of the initiative. This one shows the, we've been trying to show this in many different ways. This is the decline in recent years of the appropriation level, and then especially the allotment. So, we've been shorted about $21 million over the past four years, and then the allot, the appropriation went down in 2018 and remained down in the current, in the current bill. So, this is an indication that we need to reimagine how we handle our resources, how, where we get our resources from. So, well, you'll keep seeing this one. Number six then of the strategic initiatives is building and sustaining our infrastructure. So, developing a culture of maintenance to sustain existing and future buildings, to aim to build the, the future buildings with the idea that we intend to keep them for a very, very long time. So, maintaining them in a culture of maintenance and figuring out how to, financially how to manage that. We have difficulty sometimes with maintaining reserves to maintain the facilities, and then those reserves become targets for political efforts to reduce appropriation, and so you can see the difficulty that that sets up. So, figuring out ways to get around that and solve for that is important. Also, to commit to environmental sustainability practices so that the campus becomes a model for environmental sustainability, to commit to campus accessibility, so to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and to do everything else we can to be as accessible at campus as possible. And then also to continue to invest in the IT infrastructure and to capitalize on, I showed you the GOREX slide, so the increasing connectivity of Guam to the rest of the world is a real opportunity for us to imagine all kinds of new things, academic programs perhaps, student experience kinds of things, as well as, as well as new jobs and industries. So, some of the infrastructure that we're looking for the future, we have the Student Success Center. We've had a little hiccup on some of the funding and some challenges in Washington, DC, but we're on the verge of getting this and the engineering annex rolling along. You've seen the work going on on the water, the sort of infrastructure for the diversion of water. of water. But here's a drawing for the Student Success Center, and then the Engineering Building drawings there as well. And then this conceptual drawing for the International Dormitory, often we refer to as the PIP dorm. So one possible design for that one. That would be one of the ones in the category of a public-private partnership. So then that's sort of the strategic initiative. So the overarching thing with many individual goals would fall under those, the research university and the partnership university being the sort of marquee elements of the strategic initiatives. And then when we have the goals, then for individual goals, we want to benchmark them against other things that we have been pursuing as an institution. Importantly, our institutional learning objectives are critically important to our WASC accreditation. This strategic plan runs from now until 2024, which is when WASC has its next periodic visit. So tying the goals and paying attention to which of our goals are serving the interests of which institutional learning objective is one of the benchmarks. Another one is the high-impact educational practices that I mentioned earlier. Most of us might have remembered that, oh, maybe 10 years ago or so, these were put together by the AACNU. There were 10 of them. They added e-portfolios, so now it's 11. But these are practices that a number of different studies have suggested improve student outcomes, student success, and so are worth pursuing in a number of different ways. And so as we built in the goals, we're tracking which ones of these a particular goal would support. And then finally, there's the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. I know it's hard to read this big list of 17, but developed by the UN. This is being used all over the world as a way to, for institutions, to pay attention to how they're contributing to sustainable development in all ways you think of sustainable, so social sustainability, economic sustainability, perhaps most importantly, environmental sustainability, and to cope with climate change. So those are three sort of big areas that we're tracking our goals to figure out how well we're contributing to these various benchmarks. So that concludes that.
How can we get those to you?
Do you have one in mind as an example of what you?
Several, actually. I'd like to write them up.
Or just mention one, and I'll see whether it fits into the current structure.
Okay. For example, one thing I've noticed, I came here from living in Japan. In Japan and Korea, those places, there are a lot of businesses that send people off to get MBAs. But right now, at this time, the university's business school is not in a par with Stanford or Fordham or these other schools. But those young business professionals, for example, they need to improve their English. We have an English language institute. I think during the summer, a new program could be started to offer accelerated English for those kinds of graduate students. And we could become a center that would be well-known throughout Japan and Korea and maybe China. That's one idea. Another idea?
So if I could just use that one as an example? So that would be a goal that then would fit under the initiative. And that would have pieces of it that would include, we think about the English Adventure Program now that's providing short-term English immersion programs to 6,000, more than 6,000 students a year and generating, Carlos, how much is the net? We get 400,000. I think the rest of the institution gets 400,000. How much? Little over a million a year from that program. And so you could easily see how we could marry that to another kind of a program. And you think about an engineering program taught in a native English-speaking place with English immersion and not very far from half the world's population, that that could be an attractive program. So then that touches on things that relate to the academic program, to innovation, to certainly to revenue expansion and perhaps some kind of a public-private partnership. So that would fit in under the initiatives and could be a specific goal. So we have actually a whole bunch of specific goals that we, you know, for instance, on the connections, we have very specific goals that say by such and such a date, we want to collect all of the evidence of our partnership. So right now, we have all the MOUs, but we want to figure out all the other kinds. Then there's another timeline for a team of people to figure out how to display that in a way that's useful. And then a third element that would be figuring out how to maybe connect CFES, the annual evaluation, and maybe trip reports so that it could populate the information, so that you could be able to put that into the database to say, you know, I went on a trip to attend a graduation in Yap and made these connections and hosted an alumni event there, and you know, there's some connection going on in Yap. And so if somebody were then looking to say, oh, I'm going to Yap, or I'm interested in some connection there, well, what's happened recently there? Oh, I see that Tom Price went there and did this on this date, you know? So that would be, those kinds of things are very specific goals. On anything to do with the academic program, it's just the, the goal would be to have professional doctoral programs and eventually research PhDs. But what those are and the timeline for them are, you know, that's a faculty responsibility. So the strategic planning group just said, let's go in this direction, and now we need to populate. Some of the things that are sort of more administrative have lots of detail, all the way out to, you know, what sustainable development goals of the UN, you know, with this particular goal. And then there are others where it's open and we need to fill in those blanks. And some of them, it'll take some while, you know, you have to figure out how to collect and organize this stuff. And then you'll think of ways to use it that you can't think of now. So there'd be many more elements of that. So that's a very good idea, and I think is one that's worth pursuing.
If I could suggest another one. I think, I've been concerned a long time about Guam's vulnerability to the fact that almost 99% of its fuel is imported. And looking at what's going on in the Middle East these days, that it's not inconceivable that those supplies could be cut off. And so for island sustainability, I think the university could lead research in a couple different directions to reduce that vulnerability. I think that should be a major goal as a research university.
And that fits, too, under a number of different initiatives. And there's been effort to, I know we've been working with the Siemens Corporation for the possibility of a more sustainable campus kind of environment that would eventually save us a lot of money in fuel bills and power bills. So those, all of those fit, and you can see how that would serve interests of environmental sustainability and the sustainable development goals. So, yeah.
We're going to that side of the room? Okay, none over there, so right here?
I think like a lot of faculty, I can't speak for all. I'm especially interested in what the research trajectory would mean for faculty. And especially because you've talked about doctoral, professional programs in very specific, you know, DBAs or whatever else. And you've talked about things that people at the Ag School or wherever do, because they generate a lot of grants. Those of us in class, what are you envisioning? Are you envisioning sort of campus-wide increase in research productivity? Would there be accommodations in terms of teaching loads for that, in terms of other expectations? Or are you envisioning, you know, academic disciplines competing to produce research PhD programs? You know, just the questions are obvious.
So are we already running on sort of multiple speeds, you might say, around the university? We have faculty who are principally engaged in sort of all three areas of academic life, so teaching, research, and service, if you particularly include extension. So we already have a mixed sort of situation. So I've been in institutions where they are primarily liberal arts colleges, and it's hard to break out of that kind of a model. And if you're trying to, you know, have, because we'll have, in the end, we'll no doubt have some departments that are running research PhD programs and some that are strictly undergraduate liberal arts college or just bachelor's degree programs without much anticipation of master's or doctoral programs, right? And then in between, we'll have some that will be running professional doctorates in the middle, and then some doing master's degrees and not professional doctorates. So we'll have, we already have variety. So institutionally and culturally, we're a little better prepared than some institutions that would be trying to move in this direction. One thing I'm particularly interested in, and we've made some changes this year, is on the use of research indirect costs to invest in the research enterprise. And so, and also, we've done very well with the EPSCOR grant, the previous EPSCOR. We've applied with a great deal of effort, thank you very much, for another renewal at a higher amount. And EPSCOR is designed to try to spread the expertise, to spread the research resources to disciplines that are not, that are not the strength of the institution. So our first one really kind of focused on building up the strength in our particular fields, environmental and marine biology. And then now there's this effort to try to spread that sideways. A further thing is to shift our mindset about the use of indirects to target them for supporting the research enterprise across the institution. So in order to move up in this sort of, not only to be a better institution of the kind we are now, but to aspire, we're going to need more resources and figure out how to distribute them in a way that makes this work. Another thing I'm interested in, and a shift in the direction of research universities paying attention to faculty who have principally been focused on teaching and may not have maintained a research agenda. So we should think about ways to help those faculty who want to restart an agenda or even in the direction of the scholarship of teaching and learning, which is frequently a way to sort of invigorate sort of a later career re-engagement with research, is to focus on pedagogy. And so I've been in an institution that had a very aggressive effort to improve the scholarship of teaching and learning and to value that while that institution was reaching for the R1 status is what they were working on. So there'll be lots of other elements that we'll have to work on. So hiring processes, right now, our structure is we anticipate hiring a brand-new assistant professor right out of grad school. I think our mindset is it's a single person, maybe with a family, but not two. Two people we're hiring, we don't quite know how to do that. We don't know how to hire a senior person. We don't have any way to accelerate the tenure. By the way, we don't have any provision, if you have a family medical leave reason, to delay tenure. So there are a lot of things that I think that we would need to reform, review, revise as we move along. I think institutions should just do that anyway, but particularly in this case of trying to up our game, I think we need to pay attention to all those things and to recognize that we'll have multiple speeds going on at the institution. And we really do want to do them all well because we're it. We're it in an enormous area, you know?
Okay. So can you introduce yourself before your question?
I'm Bob Barber. I'm the, one of the Extension Ag economists in the College of Natural Applied Sciences. I want to put an idea on the table to maybe start a conversation around this. And it has to affect the affordability for our students to grow our graduate programs and also to leverage our undergraduate faculty. I recently had the experience of visiting many Philippine universities over the summer. And one of the questions was asked often by the students there is, what form of graduate assistantships do you have? What form of tuition waivers do you have? We don't.
All that.
Yeah. What I would like to propose to you is that we, look, we have many faculty who can only, you know, we can only teach so many classes. And when you're doing lectures and labs, that takes a big portion of teaching load. I'd like to propose that we formally establish, this is particularly important for off-island graduate students that come in, but graduate teaching assistantships that pay a stipend similar to what we would pay an adjunct, but at the same time give a tuition waiver. The economic gain by gaining another, being able to have a professor offer two sections of a course with two grad students doing the labs instead of one lecture lab, you've dramatically increased the undergraduate tuitions that would more than cover the graduate tuition waiver. The tuition waiver, almost every university I've known has a graduate tuition waiver. So I'd like to see us start talking about this across all of our graduate programs. I think it could grow our graduate programs, get more graduate students moving, get more faculty engaged, and it would help our undergraduate faculty, especially some of our science faculty with the labs, to go forward. What are your thoughts on something like this?
We need to do all of those things. So, yes, we do. I think, yeah. So even things about, we're talking about the use of the research indirects. At the moment, we don't really have any capacity to provide an incoming assistant professor in a scientific field with anything like lab equipment. And so, you know, we need to, in order, we have to get to this state where we, you know, could be able to give some research support for such a person. I think attracting off-island, way off-island, East Asia, mainland US students would be an important measure of the quality of the institution. I think we have a lot to offer, particularly East Asia. I think there's a lot of potential for bringing in more students, you know, at a higher tuition amount. And it would be very good for our students to have a variety of students from elsewhere. And so I think there are multiple reasons why it would be worthwhile. Just as, you know, thinking about revenue, I started some master's degrees at an institution a little smaller than UOG. And we generally sort of felt like they would net about half a million. So, you know, if you're running about 30 students in a master's degree a year, that nets about half a million to the institution. So, you know, just thinking about replacing revenue that we're not getting from the government, you can think in those terms. You do have to choose carefully. They have to be ones where you can get 30 a year, you know, that kind of thing. But that's part of the financial model issue. So typically, universities aren't structured in a way where faculty and administrators are regularly thinking about the sources of the money that make things happen. You know, people think that my discipline, English, is a money sink. But actually, when you fill up a classroom and you have a relatively low-paid English professor, and it's just a room without much technology, that actually makes money, right? And then some of the things you think would make money are often surprised, oh, that actually costs us some money. And little things, you know, like we always prefer a little tiny class of, you know, six or seven or eight or something, but it'd be good to recognize that that actually is costing the institution money, right? So if we could get more students in or, you know, so the small classes are sometimes, if you have too many of them, it can become a drain on resources. But we don't typically think that way. We're not encouraged to think that way. So it's, there are a number of different ways to try to get people to think that way. But that's part of the financial model, how to think about that.
Roseanne Jones, School of Business. I'd like to shift the question to be a little more personal. In this strategic plan, all leadership comes from the group of us and the leadership. And I'd like you to tell us a little bit about year two. You've been very busy during year one, and here's the product of that. And as we try to move from where we are to where we aspire to be, what does your work plan look like for year two, and how do you see this rolling out?
So you mean for the plan particularly?
I'm thinking more in terms of, for faculty, we all think of our CFES and our annual plan of work. I know that when you came to the University of Guam, the Board of Regents had sort of a plan for you to roll out and to get to experience the region, and you've traveled a lot, you've seen a lot, and clearly it's showing up in this strategic plan. So I think we're looking to leadership to show us what's next, what's the next step, what will you and the leadership team be doing in this coming year that we can watch out for, tag along to, be inspired by?
Okay. Thank you, Roseanne. So the, rolling out the details of the plan and then sticking to it, always the hard part about plans is actually carrying out what you say that you intend to. I think that the way that we approach the finishing up of the good to great, really just paying attention to the details and saying, who's in charge of this, who's going to clean this up, who's going to finish this off, is indicative of the way that we would approach that. So a lot of the specific goals, filling in the goals, would be the important, important part of this year's plan. I think you've seen how, I think, how the plan is really building on and growing from what the institution's been doing already. And many current initiatives are sort of captured in this, in this plan. So I'd say the three-plus-one program with criminal justice at Northern Marianus College is an example. In the, in last year, we sealed that deal and now extending that both disciplinarily to other disciplines at NMC, but then also copying that elsewhere and thinking about how we can be a better partner for our regional colleges. So I think, I imagine that the, all five of our, well, four of our regional colleges, so NMC, PCC, COM, FSM, and CMI, we can anticipate that they will eventually have a whole array of bachelor's degrees, that they'll move into being not community colleges, but undergraduate colleges. We can expect them to do that. Already, we have, as an institution, and people here have helped COM and NMC, at least those two, develop bachelor's degrees, right? So we've been helping. Most four-year institutions in the mainland U.S. resist the community colleges developing bachelor's degrees, but in contrast, we've been encouraging that. So I think it's, it makes sense for Micronesia's university to try to rise up and to fill all the things that we can fill in the master's and then in some of the professional doctorates and the, in the research area. So I think it makes sense for us to do that. So continuing to make those connections would be an important part of what I would be paying attention to in the coming year. And I think all of the, there's a lot of basic work that needs to be done. So we've been talking about things like the, we have, I think, five different things that need to be kind of aligned better with themselves. So the PNT process, the CFES, the work plan, and two other things need to be, and the faculty union contract, right? So the union contract actually is the freshest of that set. And so trying to align the other things to bring them up. So that's a lot of sort of specific work to get those all kind of, so we have to build this kind of foundation to imagine these things. And also the financial model. So if a school or a college is going to be thinking about adding a graduate degree, I know that the deans will be asking, what's in it for my school or college? Or how am I going, you know, how do I get the resources to start this thing and then how am I to see the benefit of that, right? So there are different ways that you can kind of make sure that any sort of enterprise like that can, can come to the dean so that he or she can manage it. So there's a lot of that kind of basic stuff. I think in terms of me personally, the one college I haven't been to in the region is the College of Marshall Island, so making my way there is another goal of the year. I think reinforcing our connections to alumni, particularly in Guam, but also in the region, has been an important element. And then there are two parts of the structure of the university that are really, really small now and they should be really big just to be a university of our size and complexity. One is the admissions function. So I think sort of our attitude has been, we've been sitting here waiting for students to come, and by and large, they have. And so Lawrence and the EMSS team have, in this year, kind of launched a whole bunch of traditional admissions kinds of things, recruiting people, talking to students, you know, you know, attending high school college fairs, that kind of thing. And they've been doing that with almost no resources. And so eventually, that has to become a much bigger function, partly because that's a significant source of revenue. The other one is development in every way, so fundraising, advancement, there are different terms for that. So we have a very, very small function. So Norm is an office of one and Cat has, I think, four and a half people in the Endowment Foundation. And so those should be two to three dozen people running all those kinds of things, just not even to do a great job, just to do an adequate job. And so both of those, you can anticipate becoming more significant. Both of them have to do with revenue. So we, I haven't seen the figures for this current year, but the previous year, we raised $900,000 at UOG. My previous institution was private, but, and did, you know, it wasn't a miracle case by any means, it was 3,100 students, and we netted between 10 and 11 million a year. Another way to gauge it is we're about one-tenth the size of the University of Hawaii and their fundraising operation is fine for an institution of 50,000 and they, or so, 40,000 maybe at Manoa, but anyway, they raised 70 million. So if you take the tenth, then we should be able to raise about 7 million. You know, I think, you know, we should be 5, 7 million, we should be able to do that. But we can't do it with four and a half people, right? So those are two areas that need to be built up. And it's hard to build them up when you don't have any resources to build them up. So those are some very specific things that need to rise. And those are big areas of revenue generation too.
Hui Gong Jian from College of Natural Applied Sciences. My question, thank you for the overview for the bigger picture. I often, I was often asked by some interested master students, do we have a PhD program at UOG for aquaculture? I know that, you know, just being one aquaculture faculty here is not enough to maintain. What's your perspective on if we could, you know, work with other universities in Southeast Asia, which we can provide PhD program, but take some of their core studies to incorporate into a building of something or a PhD program, professional doctoral program? And since, and the second one question is, we are developing softener program and it requires a lot of work as a new, the student source is always, we want to get more good students. Some of the faculties, especially young faculties, are developing a lot, putting a lot of time in those community, our service part. But those one is for building our research capacity, is not immediately change that into the research papers. But we were evaluated by CFES of all those, but it's kind of, our boss probably, one of the comments is like, we need to reduce the service because of have to developing the publications on that. I just felt like sometimes it's a struggle for the young faculties, especially they are moving to get the tenure. But they are helping to develop the capacity, which is not easily being seen or evaluated immediately. This is just your perspective on those, those two.
So in developing the research capacity, we have, of course, parts of the university that have really done a great job of attracting research funds. And so there's, there's a certain capacity there that's harder in, you know, in a unit that doesn't have those. And so compared to other institutions I've been in, we are, we really know how to get grants, research grants and contracts and execute them in a way. And we're also, people are more aware of research grants and the value of them than I've experienced at other institutions. So in my field, in English, you can get through a whole career, a very distinguished career without ever getting a grant, you know, whereas in other sciences, you can't have any kind of a distinguished career without getting some kind of a grant. So, so the awareness of grants and the capacity in this institution to get them and execute them is one of the strongest things we have. And so expanding that capacity to other parts of the institution, to other disciplines that haven't been participating is really important. Some of the public-private partnerships will expand resource. And how we, how we distribute that, that revenue will be important because we'll need to focus on expanding our capacity rather than using, you know, in resource-constrained times, you sort of grab whatever you can to sort of fill in the holes. And so we have to try to get out of that and to be able to make really strategic investments so that we're, you know, we can become more independent really is, is very important. The idea of partnerships with other universities, I've long been interested in the idea of dual and joint degrees. And one sort of pet, pet ideas, I visited the University of the South Pacific in Fiji and noted that they have a PhD in, Austin might know the name of it, it's, it's like island sustainability, it's not quite that term, but it's about that. And so the idea of having the University of the South Pacific and the University of Guam somehow jointly managing a program in island sustainability would be, that could be a very attractive degree to many people. Or something related to aquaculture in Southeast Asia, which is famous for aquaculture, and Guam would be another particular value. So I think, thinking along those lines, and part of the, the idea of having the strategic plan and saying, we're aiming for this research and partnership notability is to, is to say to ourselves, we need to be thinking in that. And so now what needs to happen, right? So we need to change this procedure and this policy and this financial system, we need to find resources to make this happen and to stop wasting time doing this, you know, and that kind of thing. So that's, that's part of the goal of it, I think. So, thank you for those. That's very good. Thank you.
Rich Colfax, School of Business. It was very interesting that you talked about the idea that we need to attract more students a little bit more actively, particularly not being so passive about our enrollment activities. And one of the areas that's always been of interest to me is the fact that in our region throughout the Pacific, there are many international high schools that teach their students in English, so their graduates are all proficient in the language, and yet we do very, very little, if anything, to make ourselves aware of them and them aware of us in attracting them, recruiting their, just doing anything with that. And I believe that though, many of those students and their parents would love to send their children not so far away to Europe or the mainland U.S., but rather to a closer location such as Guam. And again, with the development, projected development of the student center and other activities, I think it would be a very worthwhile area to consider. I'm investing.
And one of the limiting factors there is the ability to put them up. So we're now at well over 90% occupancy in our dorms, mostly renovated, so they're, they're reasonably good now. And, oh, and so we, the idea of the international dorm, the PIP dorm, would expand our capacity to have other students here, I think. So there's an infrastructure thing, we need to figure out how to get the resources to build that, and then we'd be able to bring students from elsewhere. At the moment, there's fairly limited, you know, we have, we have some students from Japan and Korea and mainland and other places, but we don't have a lot of places to put them up, so, but that's important. And once we, the two things would serve each other, right?
Dr. Christ, you want to talk about the meeting you want to have with faculty in a couple of weeks?
Yes. So have we scheduled the, oh, yes, it's a...
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today. I'm proposing to have just kind of a more informal kind of conversation, particularly for faculty, to be thinking about ways that we can implement and think about the kinds of goals specifically for faculty. So program development as well as, you know, it'd be good to hear whatever you think might need to change in terms of hiring processes, PNT processes, CFES things, those kinds of things. So it'll be your, whatever topic you'd like, but sort of a continuation of this, but more specifically for faculty in two weeks. And then we'll do similar ones for other categories for students and for staff and just to keep the conversation going, so.
Last call for questions?
Bob Barber, again, just a quick follow-up to mine before. If we have ideas that we think you might like in this process, what's the mechanism for feeding to you? Do you want us to send you email or do you have some channels you want us to go through?
So you could do that, either way, but I think probably thinking about, if it's specific to your college, then sort of going through that because it'll need to come in that direction. But we don't have a formal, let's talk about that in two weeks. I'll come up with a better answer for that, so.
De Leon Gero, Institution Effectiveness. President Christ, when you specified the institutional, no, strategic initiatives, the six or seven of them, research partnerships, are those already, and the way they were presented, are they prioritized already or that research is first? Is that how it would be or it's...
Yeah. So I think of, I think of the first two as being kind of co-equal, the research and partnership to be recognized as a research university. In terms of our funding, we're way there. We're a serious, we are doing serious, very high-quality research in a number of fields at this institution, and we really know how to do that. But I'd say we're not recognized as a research university. So the suggestion that we pursue the Carnegie classification is a way to sort of certify, have an external body certify our status in that way. The ways that we're not yet a research university is particularly in terms of the doctoral programs and then also the number of master's degrees that we have. One of our limiting factors, as you would all know better than anybody, is the relatively small population and our, and our isolation makes it hard to imagine being able to sustain a large enough pool of students to complete a program. So we need some audiologists in Guam, but we don't need 30 a year, right? There's that kind, or even in the region. So the region, there's a, there's a lot of potential in the region because the attainment level is relatively low because of distance and the community colleges and so on. So there's, there's potential. It's half a million people in Micronesia, 170,000 here. So, you know, we have the potential to raise that number, but we have to do a lot of work to make that happen. So to be recognized as a research university, it's the money, but then it's also the degrees that we offer. So it'll be a careful way to develop that. And then the partnerships, we're already, we're a land-grant institution, everybody knows us, people in Guam and the region love UOG in a way I haven't seen for other institutions I've been in. So we're, we already have a solid reputation, but to say, this really matters to us, this is part of our identity to be a partnership university and particularly to be just serving our GCC and the other community colleges in the region and to be more obviously supportive partners, not just sort of, we're here and you're there and, you know, let's think of a few things we can do together, but to have a much more robust relationship and to suggest that this is Micronesia's university, you know, that partnership thing and the research thing are sitting, those I would consider to be the kind of, the marquee elements of the plan. And then the, the other ones are the foundation on which those two directions are standing. And we can't do any of that unless we have resources, an improved student experience and improved student outcomes, better, you know, sort of management of our processes, customer service, those kinds of things are all necessary foundational items. So we're not going to achieve the marquee items if we don't do the others, so it's a little hard to say any, any one of them is more important than the others. I would just say that the research and partnership, that would be, those are the things that would matter to the community. Oh, that's what the institution is aiming to go in that direction. Does that help?
Thank you, Mr. President. And we have time for just one more question. We're going to wrap up at 3:30 if we don't have any other further questions. Okay? How about a round of applause for our 11th president, Dr. Thomas Christ? That concludes our town hall meeting. Enjoy the rest of the day. Thank you very much.